Brock, plane taking off?
Feels like it.
Yeah, you definitely got a tilt there.
Right.
Quiet bunch. Terry.
Kim, Dave needs the link to the meeting. I just emailed him the one you sent me, but I don't know if it's specific.
It's not. I was just gonna add it, resend it, but you should have it now.
Um, Richard, we have sort of one day.
Yeah, he's got it.
So we know first movie, and we began so I'll just go check and see. The four.
My apologies, everyone on the call. I'll call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. And I think we have everybody on the line at this point. So I'll ask for any declaration of interest or general nature thereof. If you have an interest, please declare it.
I declare.
Councilor Jameson?
Yeah, respecting the SRO 42-21, the road grants. My Road Association is being considered tonight. So what do I do? Just step out for that part?
I think we'll mute you and we'll turn your camera off for the time being. That means that you can't be part of the discussion and then we'll vote on it. And once we're back on, then we'll turn your camera back on and your and your microphone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that is noted. Any other declarations of interest? I don't see any. So we'll move right along with the delegation and presentations. Just before we get going on this presentation, I just want to make a bit of a statement. So it was brought to our attention. Some concerns regards to Airbnb's previously and our Director of Planning has started some research and will be coming forward with a report as to our current bylaws and policy and zoning regarding these and what could be in the future. So I'll just ask the presenter, the way that delegations are supposed to work is that delegations are there to provide information to the council. They're nothing that we will be making decisions on. There is an opportunity for council to ask questions for clarification and better understanding of the delegation. But it isn't a planning meeting, so there is no mechanism in committee of the whole for back and forth for rebuttal or for any further just dialogue from the gallery. So I'll ask that the presenter be brief, stick to the 10 minutes if possible. And then we'll hopefully have clarification questions if necessary from the council and then we'll move forward with our agenda. Okay, so I'll introduce Erin Bradford from the Killembek Lakes Residents Association. Ms. Bradford?
Thank you very much. I'll just take a moment to pull up my presentation. I will share my screen. Okay, is everyone seeing the title slide of the screen?
We are.
Thank you very much. So Madam Mayor, through you and on behalf of our delegation, the Killembek Lane Residents Association, we thank you, the council and the township staff for accommodating our request to speak at tonight's Committee of the Whole. The Killembek Lane Residents Association has a membership of eight properties living on a remote private laneway on Killembek Lake that is under a half a kilometer in length. Our presentation identifies our position of bringing to council's attention a commercial operation in a limited service residential or shoreline residential zone. During our presentation, we wish to draw council's attention to three areas. The first being our current situation, the second being our proposed current solution, and the third being the long-term proposed solution. Our entire association membership has also submitted letters of support for this presentation, which have been included in the agenda package. Many members join us tonight virtually to observe the presentation and discussion by council. We additionally have received and included in the agenda package a letter of support along with a letter of concern by a neighboring property whose driveway sits directly on County Road Three and is not a member of our Residents Association, but wish to offer their support and concern. So our current situation is one of an imposed change of use on a property on our laneway. On January 15th, a property on our laneway was purchased by a couple residing in downtown Toronto as an investment property and offered as a short-term rental. The property is available for bookings 365 days a year via seven online booking platforms, including but not limited to Airbnb, hotels.com, bookings.com, VRBO, etc. And we have previously provided to township staff and our ward councillors some links evidencing those seven online platforms. It's operating as a ghost hotel, which essentially means that there's a lockbox on the door and the owner is absent. The owner advertises on its online booking platform, quote, "If you're looking for something from me during your stay, you won't see me." From February 12th through present, we have seen a rotating door of seven short-term rental bookings ranging from three to seven days in length. We hosted councillor Jameson, councillor Olkey, the CAO, and the planner on March 1st for a site visit with intention to appreciate the proximity of homes on our laneway. As I mentioned, we have nine homes, eight residential laneway members in less than half a kilometer. So the properties are very close in proximity. And secondly, we wanted to review a summary of concerns that we identified by our members. At this point, our preliminary concerns are now materializing with actual events and the activity has become very concerning and stressful for our members. So I'll just take a moment to walk you through some of the concerns that we've been experiencing. Certainly around increased traffic on our one-way traffic laneway. It's a single lane, also referred to as a glorified driveway. It's basically one-lane traffic, gravel road. If someone approaches you as you are driving in or out, one car needs to pull over to provide right-of passage. My, we have concerns over speeding vehicles and we've been witness to that. Myself, I have a six-year-old and a pandemic puppy. Many other members on our laneway are seniors, have pets and have grandchildren visiting. Some are hard of hearing and come out regularly from behind their garage or behind a tree line. We've had some arrivals after dark, which have been of concern as well. In terms of maintenance, again, being a privately maintained laneway, we pay for all our road maintenance. It's not something provided by our township. So we provide, we collect a fee so that we can provide gravel, resurfacing, winter maintenance. The owner of the short-term rental has invited its guests to bring their toys, including all-terrain vehicles. We do have a concern around the impact of the use of ATVs on our property and on our privately maintained laneway. We've witnessed unsupervised guests, again, speaking about a lockbox on the door in a ghost hotel. We've had visits from the Ministry of Natural Resources regarding an unattended ice fishing rod that was left in the lake for days on end, day and night. We were visited by a conservation officer who confiscated the equipment and issued fines to the fishermen. We have been visited by fire trucks repeatedly upon reports of fire regulations, namely unregulated, unpermitted, rather, fires that were happening. We have a 17-year-service retired Kingston Township firefighter living across the lake with a clear view of the property, and he called a few of us one evening observing six-foot flames with concern of trees catching fire. A fire truck was dispatched. The fire continued beyond the departure of the fire truck, which was a Friday evening, again on Saturday, again on Sunday. A second visit on Sunday occurred. The fire was still unpermitted. And the previous weekend, we observed scorched wood throughout the yard, not within the fire pit. We've had issues with respect to noise. So we had a party that went well into the early morning after 1:30 AM. We used our judgment and did not report that because we had fire trucks visiting the night before and behold, the night after as well. We have had issues of property standards with food scattered around the property, around the fire pit. At the time, we had a bear in the area, so it was of concern for our neighborhood as well. Issues with respect to insurance and liability. Regular homeowners' insurance, we're told, would not cover short-term rentals. So we're unaware of whether the insurance at the property is sufficient. Again, the liability of our private laneway is a concern if our members would be potentially liable for a vehicle entering our laneway, hitting a pothole and correct damage, having a tree branch break through their windshield of their car. We're concerned from an environmental spec perspective of the impact on waterways. Again, the owner has invited, bring your toys, bring your sewers, bring your boats. We've been very fortunate testing the water each year to not currently have zebra mussels. However, we did have recent experience of, I believe it's a tench, which is an invasive species. We have concerns around septic. The home is advertised, a hotel, pardon me, is advertised as sleeping six to eight and parking for four to six cars. We're concerned about the ongoing usage at such a capacity on the septic system. Our lake drains into Charleston Lake through Charleston Lake Provincial Park. We did speak with some local businesses who offer short-term rentals in the Charleston Lake area who were concerned about the fairness of the playing ground against these types of short-term rentals, ghost hotels. The true businesses we spoke to are incurring commercial mortgage rates, commercial insurance rates, and have had to put in costly water filtration systems as they're dealing with the public, so some to the extent of a $10,000 bill. From a COVID perspective, this has certainly been of great concern, and I recognize this is a health unit issue, but just for an appreciation of, again, the absentee owner and its impact. You know, we're hearing our government say, avoid nonessential travel, stay home, save lives. We had guests here during Ontario's stay-at-home order. In the weeks that followed, we had guests from Ontario and Quebec hotspots, including Toronto during its extended stay-at-home order, Ottawa, Montreal during its curfew and lockdown, Hamilton, well in red zone, Belleville and Tweed. We've had large groups and gatherings. We've had student parties. We, on the eve of our region moving from yellow skipping over orange into the red zone, we had six cars gathered at the property. We've had Dr. Paula Stewart, our Chief Medical Officer, involved, who has issued a direct communication to the owners. And the OPP have also visited and been involved in direct communication with respect to COVID. So quite frankly, it's been quite a nightmare and that that's our current situation. So our position is that this is a commercial business operating in a limited service residential or shoreline residential zone. We do certainly recognize, and I'll come back to this in a coming slide, that there is a lot of complexity in the spectrum of short-term rentals. But again, in this particular instance, we are dealing with an investment property that's available for short-term rental 365 days a year and advertised on seven online booking platforms. So to validate our position, we did speak with CRA, Canada Revenue Agency. And we consulted them with respect to their definition of business activity as well as their position on platform-based short-term rentals. So platform being the online, such as Airbnb facilitator. We spoke to a senior CRA advisor who stated this is, quote, "clearly a business", and the CRA is addressing these issues presently through their fall economic statement published November 2020. So on the slide above, I've just extracted from the relevant legislation from CRA, the definition of a business includes an undertaking of any kind whatsoever, pardon me, that should say whatsoever, for profit on a regular or continuous basis that involves the supply of property by way of lease, license, or similar arrangement. And further demonstrates an effort in promoting and marketing their products or services. So again, seven online platforms. The fall economic statement, November 2020, I draw your attention to Annex Four. There is a current bill of legislation expecting royal assent July 1st, 2021. And it's particularly surrounding GST and HST on platform-based, platform-based short-term rentals, essentially recognizing these are businesses and should be taxed accordingly. So our conclusion based on this exercise is that this is a commercial business activity as recognized by CRA.
I'll just note that we're at the 10-minute mark, so I'll ask you to wrap up as soon as possible, please.
Thank you. Our current proposed solution in reviewing the township's zoning bylaw is that this is a tourist lodging establishment for the accommodation of the traveling or vacationing public equipped with heating sanitary facilities, limited cooking facilities. Section 6.1 in the current bylaw identifies this as a general commercial permitted use, a tourist lodging establishment under which zoning requirements are a minimum of 1.5 acres. And we did consult legal to validate our interpretation. So our current proposed solution is that we ask council to recognize that this property is not acting in requirements, that it be, the owner be directed to stop using it for this purpose, to apply for rezoning with respect to the permitted use of the property and apply for a minor variance report with respect to the minimum 1.5 acres not being available. The proposed long-term solution, as the mayor had mentioned, there was a meeting and a motion, March 1st and 8th. The township staff is developing a bylaw. We're very grateful for that. We provided some examples of surrounding municipalities. We recognize it's a complex issue and the process will take time. Just if I may, it's important, two seconds on the complexity of the spectrum. We recognize in the zoning bylaw, there is space for a home-based business operating as an accessory use. So those properties that may have a primary residence with someone who rents out a room are not considered commercial properties. We may have properties where someone lives there 10 months of the year and rents out two months of the year. Again, it's a primary use as a residence. We may have properties where families rent to extended families. This is not the traveling public. But again, our situation is 365 days a year, seven platforms. So we respectfully ask that the current zoning bylaw be used to address this situation. And with that, Madam Mayor, apologies for going over and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I will now, I'll ask you to not share your screen so I can see my whole, oh, she's gonna do it for you. There we go. So I can see everybody. Okay, councillors, do you have any questions for clarification or questions of the speaker? So I'm gonna recognize councillor, maybe, then Deputy Mayor Lackey. I need you to unmute there, councillor, maybe. There we go.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you, I have a few questions or statements, I guess. So I'll go through them all and then whoever wants to. Saying that even if there's a bylaw or, or the variance for the property is made, I don't see the behavior changing. So that means that the septic bed is going to be overloaded. There's gonna be more beds and heads than actually should be there. The parking is always going to be an infringement on the activity of anybody within the laneway. Emergency vehicles also getting there would be difficult to maybe manage the site in, in regards to the burning permit being required. Somebody needs to call that in. So the fire department would have to be there more often than not if they continue this sort of behavior. So the safety requirements need to be emphasized and made sure that they are followed. And we need to have more teeth in it if we're going to allow this particular residence to actually become and stay as a hotel. Is there a local maintenance person who actually visits a site on a regular basis and maintains it, cleans it between outings? Because obviously somebody's gotta look after it if the owners are in Toronto and they're, they're not coming down here. And with the COVID being a five-person limit per, per household, and it's supposed to be people from your household, not random people from all over the countryside. So at eight, we're really stretching our boundaries here. And then perhaps the last thing is, if the insurance doesn't cover the actual resident itself, what happens to the neighbor's properties that get damaged through any, any acts of the people who are visiting there? And does their property then get fixed through the insurance policy of the Airbnb? I guess that's most of my questions. Thank you very much.
Um, I think the majority of those questions would have to be posed to the actual owner of the property based on those specifics. And the owner of the property is on the call. Our procedure bylaw does not allow us to, does not condone back and forth. Really, the way that it's supposed to work is that a delegation is supposed to provide us with information to further inform us, to make decisions about other things that have already come forward or will be coming forward. So I do note that the, I'm trying to ensure that this is not a personal thing. This is about policy. So I appreciate that you have questions about the specific property and, and what have you, but we're trying to stick to the policy and what we have, we have governance over. So I think that the property owner would likely be happy to answer those questions specifically to you and you have their contact information as they did reach out to us prior to this meeting. And I'm sure would welcome your questions. So with that, Ms. Bradford?
Thank you. Maybe just for one additional piece of information in reply to councillor Maybe's question. We have observed a cleaning company that comes in between renters. It's an internal cleaning. So they have not, to our knowledge in the past, addressed the exterior of the home. So my reference to the charred wood around the fire and the food scraps around the fire were not addressed by the internal cleaner. Also, I had sent previously through our membership to council and township staff photographs of the exterior of the property the day a renter arrived with a very thick coating of ice that had not been addressed by a property company to our knowledge. And again, bringing up the concern of liability. If someone would have a slip and fall on the property or moving from the garage that sits across the laneway to the home, you know, the lines of liability are concerning because again, the private laneway is, is a private laneway. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll go move on to the deputy mayor. And deputy mayor, if you would have any comments or questions in regards to the policy that they're referring to, I would appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and through you. My only issue is we do have information from the owner, which I think would help us make a decision. So I'm hoping that we hear, hear that.
So I would say that because the, this is what I was trying to avoid. The way that delegations are supposed to work is that there's not supposed to be back and forth. We're supposed to be asking questions for clarification. And the, the owner in question in the discussion by the delegation is, is on the call, but is not, is not a registered delegation to give this side of the story. And this is where it's, it's difficult for me as chair, because this isn't a planning meeting where we can ask questions back and forth. And really, this, the reason we accepted the delegation was to provide context to the planning staff in regards to what we may or may not want to move towards in regards to policy for short-term rentals and, and enforcement of that currently. I'm gonna recognize Mr. Jameson because he's trying to get in here. Is it germane to the, to what I'm saying?
Yes, it is to the extent that there have been two issues brought in the slides. And my, my, mine is just a request that they have proposed what to look at a current situation as for temporary accommodation, tourist lodging establishment. So my request is to the planner, if, if the planning department could review that proposal. I know we're looking at the long-term needs, but I just wonder if there is indeed an opportunity in the short term to take a look at this. It's just a request to the planning department to go away with that. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Jameson. Are there any further questions of clarification of the request of the presenter? Councillor Fordy?
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I have a question to our Director of Planning. Has there been any bylaws broken so far?
Go ahead, Ms. Vanditi.
Thank you, through your worship. Based on my review of the zoning bylaw, there has not been any bylaws broken at this point in time. Our zoning bylaw doesn't define short-term accommodation as a specific use. So the rental of this property is a residential rental as it would be with any other residential property.
Thank you. That was my interpretation as well. A follow-up question, if I may?
And then I'll recognize councillor Olkey after that.
To Ms. Bradford, you had mentioned about eight property owners, and then there was a reference later to nine. Is nine, this, this property here we're talking about tonight? It is? You're muted there right now, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Yes, the nine. Yes, the ninth is the property in question. Yes.
Okay, so is this property a member of this association, the roads?
Our membership recently had a meeting to discuss the situation. At this time, we have deferred that discussion perhaps until such a time that we can meet with the property owner. The purpose of our meeting primarily and initially was to come together as an association to collectively discuss our concerns. We agreed unanimously by motion to address those concerns with the property owner via a communication. And we discussed and agreed unanimously on the content and tone of that communication. A communication was issued. We did not receive a response. But we had also motioned to reconvene upon a response or not. It was a deadline of March 31st. Our communication was issued March 16th, at which time we would reconvene to review the response and discuss our deferred item of membership. Membership is at present for residential members of the laneway. We did not, at this time, recognize this to be a residential use.
So, okay, maybe you wrapped it up there in your last comment. So you're not allowing this member to be a member, is what you're really saying at this point?
At this point, it's a deferred discussion. I'm not at liberty to make that decision in isolation. So it is a discussion that our membership will come back together to vote on.
I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Maybe just additionally, we have historically met once a year in the fall to welcome new members. So this was an interim meeting called to deal with the issue at hand. It would be our normal course of practice to welcome new members at our September fall meeting. Thank you.
Councillor O'Leary, you had a question?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I'm hearing about fire department calls, and I'm hearing no bylaws were broken. Is there any report on what the fire department had to say about their response to these calls? Thank you.
Do we have the fire chief on the call this evening to reference that? I don't believe I see them on the call. Go ahead, CEO.
No, the fire chief is not on the call. I will follow up with him and communicate to council what the result of the fire visits were.
Thank you. Is there any further questions in regards to the delegation? Councillor Gurrell, you're the only one that really hasn't spoke yet? Nope. Okay. I just didn't want to say that I, oh, you're muted.
All been covered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll thank Ms. Bradford for her presentation. No decisions, as I said, no decisions are being made this evening. And councillor Jamison's request to staff can be considered. And it's really speaking back, I think, also to the report that will be forthcoming in regards to how we will view these types of properties going forward and how the municipality may or may not enforce future bylaws. So thank you again, Ms. Bradford, for your delegation, and we wish well.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we're moving along in the agenda, we'll go to staff reports. Oh, and if there's any further questions specifically in regards to this property, we'll ask that the councillors respond to the owner directly based on the communication that they received. Okay. So moving on with the agenda, staff reports, SR-039-21, Community and Business Services Report Visitor Services Agreement. I need a mover and a seconder. I'll read the motion and then I'll ask for a mover and a seconder. The committee of the whole recommends that council award the contract RFQ CBS 2021-01 Visitor Services to the town of Ganonakwe. And that the committee of the whole recommends that council authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into an agreement with the town of Ganonakway for the provision of visitors' services. A mover and a seconder, please. Councillor Fodey, and then councillor Jamison. Okay, so any discussion on this motion? I see no hands up, so I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, and the motion is carried. Thank you. And the next motion that is, oh, did somebody speak up? Did I miss somebody? Okay. Next on the agenda is SR-040-21, Operations Report Replacement of the Non-Reporting Water Meters in Lansdowne. And again, I'll read the motion and then ask for a mover and a seconder. The committee of the whole recommend that council authorize staff to engage Ontario Clean Water Agency, Aqua, for the replacement of one hundred and thirty-six non-reporting water meters in the village of Lansdowne. And that committee of the whole recommend that council reallocate thirty-five thousand from the Water and Sewer Reserve Fund to engage Aqua for the replacement of all the non-reporting water meters, as well as valves and curb stops if required. Any, sorry, mover and a seconder on that, please. Deputy mayor, and then councillor O'Leary. Okay, so any discussion on this motion that's on the floor currently? Deputy mayor, and then councillor Maybe. And Brock, sorry, Mr. Gurrell.
So through you, your worship, I'm just wondering with Aqua being our people on duty, how did we miss these meters not functioning? Because that's the way I read it, is we have non-functioning meters. And typically, they, you know, they can tell if there's a leak in the line. They can tell a lot of things. So how did we not figure out that we had non-functioning meters?
Does the director of finance want to take this, or the director of operations? It doesn't matter to me. I know that director of finance worked with the original contract before the director of operations. Do you want to go forward, Dave?
Um, sure, through you, your worship. I can't speak to the history of the water meters. I know that it's one of those things that they've just gradually started to fail. We've found that the majority of them, the ones that have been tested so far, that the magnets have failed in them. So as a result of that, now they've started to accumulate and they need to be replaced.
Ms. Tindall, did you want to add to that?
Sure, through your worship. So I think the other issue was previously, we weren't auditing the readings carefully enough when it came to the monthly readings that we received from the meters. The way the billing's set up, we bill for a flat consumption amount. And then beyond that flat amount, we bill in addition a variable rate. So we typically have recognized the revenue that we needed to, but we have not done a great job at actually reconciling those readings to make sure what the meters were putting out for reads was reasonable and making sense. So we're putting better processes in place to ensure that that doesn't happen again. And I think, as Dave mentioned, it's just now coming to the age where a lot of them are staring to fail. So we're seeing a significant number of them needing to be replaced.
Deputy mayor, was that answering your question?
Not entirely. It did. But a lot of those meters were changed from a different system into electronic. So I just failed to see, I mean, they used to go around and check the meters. They were on the side of the buildings. Now they don't do it. They drive around and, you know, they hold some sort of machine to check them. So I think we need to do a better job of how we meter this. And I'm hoping that this is what we're doing.
I would say that we are going forward, for sure. Councillor Maybe, you had a question, and then councillor Gurrell, and I see councillor Jamison.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and through you. One of my questions is about the curb stops and the valves. One, what portion, or is all of that township property? And my suggestion is that we replace as many of them as we need to, or even more, to cycle through the valves so that in twenty years, the other half of the valves get changed, since there's one hundred and thirty-six meters to be changed. Now, certainly not all thirty-six probably are going to fail, but I hazard a guess that there will be some. But it might be prudent to actually split up some of these valves and so that down the road, we're not going to be hit with every valve having to be changed in the village. And with our new metering system or metering pricing, I'm sure that that will capture some of the, without the meters being changed, we wouldn't have gotten that extra volume that's used per building. So this is a good step in collecting all the fees of water rates that are being used. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maybe. Director of operations, would you like to speak to that?
Through your worship. Councillor Maybe, the valves that we are saying may need to be replaced are directly adjacent to the water meter inside the house. When a house is built, that is part of the plumbing. But given that we, the municipality, have to come in and operate it for a valve that hasn't been operated possibly in the last ten years since the meter was placed last. So that's just a contingency. Typically, you don't have to replace those valves. But as they haven't been operated, we're erring on the side of caution and just making sure that we're covered for that. We had included curb stops as well, because if the valve fails, then we're going to have to shut it off the next one downstream. Again, hasn't been turned in a decade. So we're just making sure that we're covering those bases so that if they do fail. I don't think personally that we're going to have to replace a bunch, but I wanted to include an item in there that if we do encounter something like that, that we've thought about that in advance and covering our bases. I don't think we want to go and replace all of them, because I'm sure most of them are still in good working order.
Okay, I have councillor Gurrell, and then councillor Jamison.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. I share deputy mayor Lackey's concern here. As I read this report, a hundred and twenty-six meters have been found faulty. And I appreciate, or I'd like to know who's responsible for reading those. It's unfathomable to me that you can have that level of failure. And is it Owaka? Is it former staff? Is it staff? That is very concerning. And my second point is, and I'm a little confused by this, when it says these are covered under warranty, and then it goes later in the report to say end of life and to be replaced. So which is it? And thirdly, what about Neptune here? Who, is it Owaka who's supposed to be monitoring that? They've done, if so, if so, they've done a miserable job and they need to be called to task on this. They're looking after our damn water. Fourthly, who is responsible for reading those meters? And is the company who manufactures them willing to come good besides saying, yeah, they're covered in warranty? What ones? Are they ten years old, twenty years old? I am really confused by that reporting. Something seems amiss to me. Thank you very much.
Director of operations, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, through your worship, to councillor Gurrell. So we've been speaking with Neptune, and they are going to replace the water meters themselves under warranty. The Neptune water meters come with a twenty-year warranty. It's full coverage for ten years. We just came in underneath that ten years. And then it deescalates or it degrades after that, back down to zero at twenty years. So this is the right time to do it in terms of replacing the meter. There is a cost, so they replace the meter itself, but the installation of the meter is not covered under the warranty. That's something that we have to take on, which is typical. Aqua does the water meter reads for us, and they provide the information to us for us to make those calls for replacing the water meters or whatever. And again, I can't speak to the history of it, but this is where we are now. We have to replace these water meters. It's the smart thing to do. They've brought it to our attention. They have concerns with it as well. And I think they have been doing their job, what's included in their contract. And it's up to us to make this right.
I, thank you. I do appreciate that we are where we're at. I still find it staggering that somewhere, there was a link in the chain broken. And I wouldn't mind understanding very clearly where that link was, because we've got a hundred and twenty-six meters currently being replaced out of how many, three hundred? You know, that's an amazing number. And what would they say about the immediate future, about the failure rate? How do we know that's not going to double in the next year? I mean, this really does open up a lot of questions to me. So I appreciate that a lot of the current, it's not a staffing issue, you weren't here. But Owaka's our number-one go-to people. And I just, this seems a little too slick to say, oh, Neptune's going to, you know, they're under warranty. We're incurring thirty-five thousand dollars worth of problem here. And I'm not happy about that, to be honest with you, in a stress system. Thank you very much.
I'll recognize councillor Jamison. And then deputy mayor, I'll let you have the last word, and then I'm going to call the question on this, unless, oh, I recognize councillor Fodey as well.
My only comment is that I appreciate that the staff complimented it as it is now, even though I'm as concerned about it as other councillors, particularly councillor Gurrell's comments. But I appreciate that the current staff is taking it on. But my comment really is that this is a long list of things in various areas of the township that we've learned about in the last two years. And it's one that's very disturbing, because it does have the impact on the worry around the safety of water is always in the back of everybody's mind. But I have a lot of confidence in the folks we have. I too would like to know what the heck went wrong there. But I've got a long list of things. I'd like to know what went wrong. So I appreciate the people on the job now are prepared to find out. Thank you.
I'm going to actually let the director of finance in to say a few things before I go to councillor Fodey, and then deputy mayor can have the last word.
Thanks, through your worship. So I think just to try to clarify what happened with the meters is, on a monthly basis, a reading would still occur. It would still get transmitted to the handheld and be uploaded into the system. The step that was missing on the finance staff's side was we weren't comparing the meter readings to make sure that they were actually registering an incremental amount each month. So as far as the meter and actually reading it, a reading came out. But unfortunately, we didn't have processes set up appropriately to make sure that those meter readings through the year were reasonable and showed consumption that made sense. This is probably an issue that is quite likely going to come through the audit as well. I've talked to the auditors about it. And definitely a learning opportunity for us to improve the processes that we're using around the water sewer billing. And I'm working with the person responsible for that to come up with a reconciliation to make sure we are recognizing that going forward. Because at the end of the year, we really should be reconciling all the water that comes through the system to what we've billed. And I don't see that that happened in the past at the township, so that's definitely something we'll be working on going forward.
Thank you, Director Tindall. Oh, sorry, Dave, I'll let you say something and then go on to councillor Fodey.
Thank you, through your worship. I just wanted to add as well, the replacement process that we're going to be undertaking, we're going to do in steps, replacing meters and then receiving new meters under warranty. And at the end of the day, we will have a stock of ten meters complete that as more come up, we will continue to be able to replace those at that time. So once this is over, if more come up, we'll be ready to replace those as well. That was all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Councillor Fodey?
Thank you, your worship, through you. I agree with my cohorts. This is more than just disappointing, but having said that, I'm not one bit surprised our current staff caught it. And kudos to all of yous. Are they actually being read every month? That was the first thing that caught my mind. We only lack five meters of having half of them not reporting. If you added five more to that one hundred and thirty-six, you'd have half of them. That's more than a little disappointing. And as councillor Gurrell had said, the OCAA needs to answer some questions here. Do they just go along robotically? Do they just go along robotically and just read these and never check their own numbers to see that there's no fluctuation anywhere? I think there's a few answers need to be asked here yet over the people that are actually supposedly watching our water system. Thank you.
Director Tyndall, do you want to speak to that?
Through your worship, so it's actually, I believe, in the contract with Aqua, it's not actually within their realm of responsibility to actively manage the meters and the readings that are coming out. I believe that's more of a component that's managed through township staff. I think part of the problem is probably some disconnects in the last couple of years with changeover and staff and so on. And maybe just, for me personally, I know, I think just the workload, this is not an area I had a lot of time to look at till last year when we did the water sewer study. And definitely it came to light through that, that study. And as I said, and we tried to explain, I think, through that study that that base consumption that we're charging our customers actually covers, is quite, compared to other municipalities or our size and what residential usage actually usually would look like. We were charging twenty cubic meters, I think, was the threshold, and that's actually fairly high. Most residential properties would not use anywhere close to that. So we've lowered that threshold through council's approval, through that, that rate study. Having said that, I totally understand and agree with council's concern. And like I said, we're putting better process in place to try and reconcile those consumption that read, those readings to make sure that we catch these things on a more proactive basis.
Thank you, Director Tyndall. And Deputy Mayor, do you have last words, and then we'll, I'll call the question?
No, unmute. There we go. Yeah. Part of the problem that I have, and I agree with the rest of council, but we are personally responsible through the municipal act for our water and sewer. So we need to get on top of this, and we need to get on top of it now. So I think Aqua needs to come to the township and explain what happened, and we need a report.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'll take those, we'll take those comments, and we'll speak to the Director of Operations and the Director of Finance to have that information come back to council. In the meantime, that...
In support of, in support of Deputy Mayor Lackey's comment, the sentence says, "Owaka performs these readings monthly by using the program supplied by the water meter company Neptune Tech." So if that's the case, we need to have an answer from them. That's in support of Deputy Mayor Lackey. Thank you.
Well, and I think it would do council good to understand who's responsible for what specifically in the process, because I believe that Director Tyndall actually said that we are responsible, Aqua's responsible for reading the meters. We're responsible for catching if there's major changes in consumption, those sort of things. And we didn't have those processes in place, and that's not a slight to the current staff. There's these things that are coming up, but that we're going forward. Having said that, I think it does, put shine a light on the fact that we are responsible as council for water in water and sewer here in the municipality, and we're personally liable for water quality. So I think having a better, clearer picture on who's responsible what for each part of the process is important going forward, and we can definitely request that from both staff and from our suppliers. Director of Operations, I'll let you have the parting shot, and then we'll call the question.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up, based on what Kate had said as well. When Aqua goes and does the readings, they provide, they provide this service for us. They don't see the previous numbers when they are out reading. So they read two hundred and eighty-one meters, and all of them have their own unique numbers, but they don't refer it back to a previous month. They don't have that data in front of them. That's, that's something that we have to set internal processes to be able to review that. That's, that's us. They don't make a, they don't make a tool to be able to do that. They capture the information on the fly. They give it to us, and it's for us to manage that. So I'm happy to give you guys a report on, on the process, but in all fairness, I don't think that it's Aqua that is the issue here. I think that I look in the mirror, and I think that I need to set things in place and working with Kate as well to, to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And if it does, then we're catching it, and it's being addressed. I think that's what we can commit to. So I'm, I'm happy to provide a report for who's accountable for what in terms of our water system and all those types of things. But myself personally, I think that Aqua does provide us a very good service for, for our water system.
And with that, I'm going to actually call the question. All those in favor of the motion that's at hand, which is that we reallocate the thirty-five thousand from Water and Sewer Reserve Fund to engage Aqua for the replacement of the non-reporting water meters as well as valves and curb stops as required. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, and the motion is carried. Thank you. And we look forward to that report, Director Holliday, to provide further clarification of responsibilities in the chain of command when it comes to water and sewer. So next on the agenda is Operations Report SR-041-21. And the motion is that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council receive this report on the illumination study follow-up, and that further, no further action be taken at this time. So I need a mover and a seconder for this motion. Sorry, I can't see anybody. The clerk shut off my gallery view, so I can't see anybody. So hang on two seconds. I have Deputy Mayor, and then I have Counselor Mayby. Thank you. Okay, so she's going to share the chart now. The motion is on the floor for the illumination study follow-up. And once we have that up, we will discuss it. There we go. Okay. So everyone should be able to see the report at hand. Are there questions in regards to this report? And if I can't, if, if you've got your hand up and I'm not recognizing you, please unmute yourself and just identify yourself, because I can't see everyone.
Mark Jameson.
Go ahead, Mr. Jameson.
Thank you very much, your worship. Your worship, I guess I just, I understand what is going on here. I have to express my disappointment in the province, MTO in particular, for not pursuing something that has been discussed. And I'm referring specifically to the lighting up here in, at the entrances to Sealy's Bay. Also disappointed in the county for not participating, and it got, with respect to the illumination at the entrances here, it kind of got pushed down as so many things do from the province and the county, to us became our problem. And unfortunately, the expectation is that those lights are going in in Sealy's Bay, because there was a discussion with the previous operations regime that this was going to happen. Now, I appreciate the position we're in for many, many reasons we're in. So I, I am asking your worship that rather than the phrase, "No further action be taken at this time," that we ask that staff commit to reviewing this in the context of the 2022 budget, and that, that we also further investigate our options, particularly with MTO on this lighting challenge, as I see it, and many of my residents see it, before the mandate of the current government is over. Thank you, your worship.
So, Mr. Jameson, you're proposing an amendment to the motion at hand that, and that...
No, I'm sorry, your worship. I, I'm not trying to propose an amendment. I'm, I'm putting really a request in that this, this is something that is pursued and discussed in the context of the 2022 budget. This sits as it is, doesn't really indicate what action points. The report is what it is. It says what it says. It's out of touch with the reality of resident expectation, and I think it needs to be looked at in forthcoming budget discussions and discussions with the province. I'm not sure if that needs to be a motion, because I have faith in the staff that if, if they nod heads and say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to look at this, that's good enough for me.
So I guess the request would be that it would be put on an action list for the 2022 budget going forward, and that it wouldn't fall off the plate. Okay.
Yes, please.
I'm sure that the staff has made that note, as has the clerk. And thank you very much for that request. So are there any further questions or concerns in regards to this report at hand? Deputy Mayor? And then Counselor Mayby?
Thank you, and through your worship. You know, I looked through some of these addresses, you know, Brewers Mills Road, the entrances and exits to Sealy's Bay, but there was several attempts to get a light at Thomas Road and Fifteen, and I don't see it on there.
Sorry, did I lose you, Deputy Mayor Lackey? Your lips kept moving, but I couldn't hear you.
Oh, sorry. No, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the list, and I didn't see Thomas Road, Fifteen and Thomas Road. That was something that's come up several times over the years. And I don't see where it's considered.
Backstreet, County Road Thirty-three. Yeah, County Road Thirty-three is further west of Thomas, I believe.
Yeah.
Main Street East and West, those are the entrances and exits to Sealy's Bay, County Road Two at Four-O-One.
Thomas Road and Fifteen, your worship, are crossroads with Sweet's Corners Road.
Yeah, so this, no, you're correct, you're correct, Deputy Mayor. It's not on the intersection list here.
Yeah, and, and it's come up several times.
Yeah.
Counselor Jameson, do you want to create some framework there?
Well, I just, to support what the deputy mayor is saying, and to the extent that let's just add Thomas Road and Fifteen, and then they can turn this down on everything together instead of just one at a time. Sorry, that's my frustration with this whole discussion of lighting. It's been going on for a decade.
Exactly.
Okay, are there any further questions or concerns in regards to the motion, or sorry, the report that's going forward? Sorry, Director of Operations, you'd like to speak to that?
My chart has an error. I just noticed that. That should not read Backstreet in the, in the data. I provided information actually for, in the attachments for Sweet's Corners. So that, that should actually read Sweet's Corners instead of Backstreet on the, on the chart. That's, that's a mistake that I missed.
Thank you for that clarification. So it is on the list, and we will continue to beat that drum going forward by the sounds of it.
Yeah, in the attachments, I did include the information for Sweet's Corners.
Any further questions or queries in regards to the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Mayby?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. When I was reading the report, it talked about a threshold, but I don't remember reading in it anywhere what the threshold was. Are some of these intersections close to the threshold, is it, or way off from the threshold of incidents? And whether there's, there's something to be looked into there? Also, the proximity of some of the accidents on some of the charts and where they're located in proximity to the actual corner, are those accidents affiliated with the corner? And it doesn't state that either, whether that's a factor. So that kind of is those charts that the OPP had, had given us. And I did go through them fairly closely, and with the traffic loads and the different days that they actually had, had the traffic loads. My next one would be, next question would be, what would the annual cost of illuminating these intersections? One, installation, the material, and the regular charge for the hydro that's going to be required for them? And then I guess my third one here is the Four-O-One ramp. We only had two, two reports on that. Fire Department's report was not there at all on how many calls they've been to at that intersection, as well as how many other minor ones or not reported at all, which would be even more difficult to know that were actually done at that Four-O-One rampway. Because as we all know, there have been numerous accidents, but I don't, you know, the numbers that I seen didn't truly reflect what I'm hearing by the public or the residents who actually have, have encountered this particular rampway. So I think, I, I don't think the numbers are truly accurate to what, what we feel we're hearing about. Thank you very much.
So just to follow up on Counselor Mayby's point, so we did request further information, and this might have been with the former fire chief, which may need to be requested second, second time just with the acting chief in regards to the data on those intersections. Because I know that we specifically asked for it on the Highway Two Four-O-One off-ramp. And the one, the, well, part of the reason that this was, was being requested was the number of accidents that have happened. And whether they're not happening at night or during the day would also be germane to the actual requesting of these things. Because if the accidents are mostly happening in the day, if not all of them, then it doesn't necessarily back up our thought process on the illumination part. Having said that, safety is of utmost concern. The question that you're asking in regards to the cost to run these, that's something that would be, have to be specifically asked of the province, which I'm sure Mr. Holliday can, can ask that question. Counselor Olkey, you had your hand up?
Sorry, through your worship, can I just respond about the fire reports? I did speak with the, the current fire chief about the incidents at Highway Two. We consulted all of the locations, and basically he said that they don't respond to all of the calls, where the police respond, do respond to all of the calls, and the accident reports through the police would be the most up-to-date information and inclusive. So I didn't include the information for the fire, because what they're telling me is that the incident reports through the OPP are the most accurate and inclusive.
So we, what is the process, Mr. Holliday, in order to get that data? Is that, I'm assuming that's freedom of information. We can request that data?
We can request the, the police SP reports from, from the province, yes.
Okay. So, sorry, Counselor Olkey, you had your hand up?
Yes, your worship, and thank you. I just checked with a resident, and apparently the worst time of the year at Thomas Road and Fifteen is the fall because of fog and just trees right up to the roadside and everything. It's very, very hard to see that road at various times. And they've been after illumination for many years. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. So the motion that's on the floor right now, moved by Deputy Mayor Lackey, seconded by Counselor Mayby, is that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council receive this report on the illumination study follow-up, and that no further action be taken at this time. I think that based on the conversation that we've had, no further action based on this time, but it's not a dead issue based on the questions that have been asked this evening. So I, unless you want to make something specific for, that it has to be followed up, otherwise we would need to amend the motion that's on the floor. So I'm seeing a shaking of heads, so we're not going to be amending it, but we are, CAO, we would like to speak to that.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I will undertake to bring this back as part of the budget discussions for twenty-two, twenty-two. So I'll wear this one.
Okay. So if, with that, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, and the motion is carried. Oh, sorry, Counselor Gurrell, I apologize.
No, I apologize. I'm a little late. Is it possible, when we say no further action be taken at this time, could we, if we are going to revisit this, in some time, can we not put in a deferral to, to budget time next year? Or would that be inappropriate? I'm not quite sure where to go with that.
I don't, I don't, I don't think a deferral is going to um accomplish what it is that that has been requested, I think you would have to amend it to say that and that no further action be taken at this time, but that we request that it be consi- further considered in the twenty-twenty-two budget. That would be the amendment, but I think that based on the CAO and the Director of Operations taking responsibility at this point, it's on the list regardless. Okay, but I appreciate the follow-up, just the same.
Okay.
Okay, so just to be clear, are all those in favor, or is there any opposed, is maybe a better all those in favor, okay, thank you, everyone, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, and I'll ask Mr. Jameson to shut your camera off and your um mute. Mute yourself as well, please, thank you. Oh, did he leave the bloody meeting? Oh, dear goodness. He can rejoin, okay. I thought we lost him forever, so. He's there, okay, good. Um, so it's SR dash zero four two dash twenty-one operations report, twenty-twenty-one private road grant program. So I'll read the motion and then ask for a mover and a seconder. But the Committee of the Whole recommends that Council approve the distribution of twenty-five thousand dollars in private road grants per the twenty-twenty-one operating budget. Mover and a seconder, please, Counselor Olkey, and then Counselor Foti. Okay, discussion on the motion. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Ray, maybe?
Uh, thank you, your worship, and through you, um twenty-five thousand, I uh I thought we had decided to up that uh, due to the fact that we have more associations that have come forward. Much like our our Grants Committee. So I'm wondering if uh, if that's enough to cover uh what we need.
I'm gonna refer to the Director of Finance, because I believe memory is triggering with me that originally this was fifteen thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars and we upped it already, but not to say that your point isn't taken, I just want to clarify in my own mind how much it's already been upped since we've taken taken office. Director of Finance, do you have that data by any chance?
Uh, through your worship, it it is increased over last year, last year was twenty thousand, this year we upped it to twenty-five. I honestly, I can't remember um before that, sorry, I'm not sure what it was. Um, but I, we can make sure to note it in the budget process too, I I tried to highlight it in the budget binder so that you know, Council can can obviously change that amount to whatever you wish.
Uh, no, I I just know that we have a a certain criteria of so many dollars per kilometer. So I just want to make sure that those who apply um, get their uh, their money.
Okay, any, uh, Counselor Maybe, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Just, we generally budget a fl- a flat amount through the operating budget and um, the Director of Operations Budget, and then depending, because we don't know for sure who is going to apply and the number of kilometers can change from year to year. So that uh, that the num- the per kilometer amount can be different depending on levels.
Just to follow up on that, uh, we actually had less applications this year than we did the previous year.
So essentially, the road kilometer per diem will be greater as of this year because of the the smaller amount of applications, correct?
That's correct, and it it actually shows that down in the in the report as well.
Okay.
The the rate per kilometer is higher.
Thank you. Okay, so Counselor Maybe, and then Counselor Foti.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you, uh, part of my question is, there is one road association that didn't qualify. I guess my first question is why, and then how many others inquired but didn't qualify? Or as you alluded to, there were more associations last year than this previous year. And what kind of percentage are we down? Uh, just a, you know, looking in the future, if more associations come on board, uh, and this number will have to increase to uh, because of course the cost of gravel is is gone up, so just wondering what those potential numbers might be, thank you.
Go ahead, Director.
Through your worship, um, I don't have the the rate in front of us, I believe that we were down four lanes previous, from the previous year. Um, there was one lane, Burma Lane, that did not uh, did not qualify. Um, they did not complete any work in twenty-twenty with the money that was allotted to them. Um, they, they had invoices for purchase of um posted stamps and for a bursary or something to that effect, so I it was a total of thirty-five dollars of the three hundred and fifty dollars or whatever it was last year that was spent. Um, they didn't provide the proper documentation as outlined in the in the policy. So as a result, they they didn't qualify. Um, I think that they were one of the ones that didn't have the bank in the association name, there there were several all the, all of the uh, the checks that have to be met or or provided down below, but uh, they they just didn't uh, meet the policy and and were disqualified as a result.
Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, um, Counselor Foti.
Your worship, through you, um, the actual financial implications are under literally that title, financial implications. According to my math, we only lack two dollars and fifteen cents, having a fifty percent increase on a per kilometer basis. And in regards to gravel and such, uh, it's my understanding of those that I do know, a lot of this money is spent for snow removal, not gravel for the roads. Grading and and such is is one factor, but snow removal is is a big portion of this, thank you.
Thank you for that, Ned, Director.
Um, that that is one of the things, through your worship, that's one of the things that I I wanted to bring to Council's attention as well, is that the the policies listed below are the only policies that have to be met with the private lane. Um, I think we need to include some more parameters like accessibility for emergency services. We don't speak to any of those things, or how the money should be spent. Um, I think that the work should should be leading towards a greater good. Um, accessibility for for all people, for for emergency services and and trying to achieve a a certain platform. Um, I don't believe that we have a private lane standard, I think we need to establish a private lane standard. So, and everybody should be working to achieve that that private lane standard, so that we can provide emergency services access to them.
I find it interesting, uh, when you're bringing these things up, because obviously you came from a municipality that had a number of private lanes too, so it's something that you are familiar with. Um, Deputy Mayor, I'll recognize you.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and through you, um, Burma Lane, I'm very familiar with. And um, we should be so fortunate uh to have uh, a road, we don't have any that are that good. Um, to be quite honest with you, um, for gravel road, um, it's well-maintained. Um, they do have material um set aside for maintenance. Uh, whether or not they used it, or whether they didn't. Um, I don't think they should be eliminated for um, the grant. Um, part of which, there was one resident who put in a lot of his own money, who's not there anymore. Uh, but regardless, um, it's it's a great lane. And um, I think we should try and help them maintain that lane, because you know what, they've asked us to take it over. I personally would have no problem, because like I said, it's uh, it's better maintained than most of our our own um, secondary roads. So um, I think we should look at that again.
Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion at hand, please signify. All those opposed, and it's carried. Can we ask Mr. Jameson to come back online? Oh, there he is. It's coming back on. Mr. Jameson, thanks for joining us. Um, okay, so the unfinished business. As far as unfinished businesses, anybody have unfinished unfinished business they would like to bring up? I don't see anybody putting their hand up. Any other business? Other business? Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, trying to unmute. Um, thank you, uh, through you, uh, I would probably should have made a notice of motion, but um, I'd like to petition Ministry of Transport, um, as far as the um the governing of transports on the four oh one. You know, having uh, a job where I'm out there seven days a week or six days a week, um it it doesn't make sense. Um, I know they did it for a reason, but um they need to govern the transport so that they're not holding up traffic for nine kilometers. Um, if if there's a a transport that's speeding, that's up to the OPP to give them a ticket. Uh, it it shouldn't be something that impedes on the the average uh person out there trying to get to their location. They're out there racing down there at a hundred and three kilometers an hour.
Okay, so that would be a notice of motion, so we'll deal with that and when we get to the notice of motion.
Oh, sorry.
And that will, no, that's okay. So other business? Counselor, maybe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, this is in regards to our delegation at the beginning of our meeting. It was indicated that we should respond to the owner of the uh property uh individually. I disagree with that, because as a township, we should be responding to this uh, this request so that us as individuals don't misstep and make sure that we're actually putting our best foot forward in resolving the situation for the other residents that are there. Um, and that's
Um, so I appreciate, Miss, uh, Counselor Maybe, your point in regards to having uh all the information forward. Um, because of our procedure bylaw, um, I was put in a difficult position. Uh, this could have, the whole reason for the delegation is to make us look at the policy in place that we currently have. And currently, as the Director of Planning indicated, uh, this property owner is not uh, contravening any current zoning bylaws, uh, as a property owner, operating it as an Airbnb. So my concern as a municipality and that this can't become personal, because civil disputes between neighbors are are actually between neighbors and and not between the municipality. We can only control what it is that we can control from a policy point of view. So my my main concern is here is that that our staff is doing the research on how these uh Airbnbs, VRBO, whatever platform you want to look at uh, are looked at as a whole and not just one specific targeted instance. Because property owners have property rights as well. So my concern is, is that we don't go down the rabbit hole of one specific incident or one specific um issue with one specific property. This was brought forward to the municipality, uh, based on this complaint. It was brought to Council, Council directed staff to bring back a report, which will speak to our current policy and what, if we could do anything to change it, to make it better, and also the costs associated with enforcement, which is, I think, is another big part of this issue that um it's one thing to have the policy or change policy to deal with these sorts of um, types of properties that are being used as short-term rentals, but there is very much a cost associated to that, and that would be to the general taxpayer, not to the specific taxpayers on these particular um roads, private roads, back at lakes, what have you. Because they're all over, it's not just uh on waterways. So um, I appreciate that that you wanted to hear from the person that the that created, in their minds, uh, the issue on that particular lane. But I I would like us as a council to look at this as a much higher level and and not get into uh specifics uh in between neighbors. Um, that if there is something that we can do as a municipality to alleviate the issue, that um, that the research that's being done by staff is brought forward in a balanced fashion and that we do our own due diligence based on that. Okay?
This is a follow-up then?
Go ahead.
Uh, this is about the third case that's actually come to our table over the time that I've been affiliated with the uh, the seat uh, on Airbnbs and traffic load and such, so this one's kind of giving us a bit more um traction, let's say, but it still comes to the point that I think it should be the township asking these questions, like I'm I'm more than prepared to send these these questions to the Township Office, so that it can be formulated in whatever fashion it wants to be, or not. You know, if that's the choice, but at least I feel that uh, it should be a township thing, so that we are correct in how it's being presented, more than anything, and not being misinterpreted by any individual on Council.
Uh, Director of Planning, I'm going to recor- recognize Marnie, and I'll recognize uh, Counselor Foti.
Thank you through your worship, I was just gonna say, if there's specific questions about some of the questions were around insurance and different practices and different things, that if they're forwarded to me, I can include some responses into the report at a general level, as it would apply to all situations. Um, so if if they can be forwarded to me, I can address them in the report that I bring forward.
I think that's wise, and that way everybody gets the same information, I appreciate that, Mr. Maybe. Counselor Foti, you have a question?
That's, yeah.
Your worship, just a comment. Um, I prefer we stay under the guidance of our staff, that's what we have them hired for, and that is their job. Whether it's the Fire Department, the Planning Director, Finance through Insurance and such. Uh, we'd have, as this uh delegation had alluded to tonight, there is a process in place that we are looking to follow. Having said that, the province really hasn't come down with clear guidelines yet, it's a new entity. It has many different slippery slopes to it, and we have to get it right. I dare wa- don't want to go out on a limb on our own at this point, until our staff have done all the due diligence they can to lead us in the right direction. Having said that, um, I'm gonna follow your lead on this one, your worship. That allegation made their presentation, you heard it, enough said, thank you.
Are there any other comments under other business? Seeing none, we'll go forward with matters arising from the standing committees. So I'll read the motion that's coming forward in regards to the EDC vacant seats. So the Committee of the Whole recommends that Council hereby declare two seats vacant on the Economic Development Committee. And the Committee of the Whole recommends that Council directs staff to advertise to fill the vacancies for the remainder of this Council term. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Mover and a seconder, Counselor Maybe, Counselor Foti. Thank you very much, the motion is now on the table for discussion. Um, just a note, um, we had uh two uh individuals resign from the committee, that is why there's vacancies. Um, and we thank them for their contributions, but due to unforeseen circumstances, they could not continue in those uh, appointments. So, um, is there any further questions or concerns about that? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, and the motion is carried. So those seats will be vacant, they will be advertised, and the um the delegates will be brought forward, or the applicants, I should say, will be brought forward for consideration by Council on a future date. Okay, so now we're at notice of motion, so notices of motion. Deputy Mayor Lackey, you have a concern about transportation and you'll be bringing that forward for consideration?
Uh, yes, if you uh, if you don't mind, I think that's uh something that's uh important after the accidents that have happened in uh our jurisdiction, that our um, fire staff have had to look after, that's part of it, so. our jurisdiction that our, um, fire staff have had to look after. That's part of it, so. And, uh, having been on the four oh one daily, um, I think that's, man, I'll go to Counselor Foddy. Um, you know, I think they need to take that regulation away so that they're not racing down the four oh one at a hundred and three for ten kilometers.
Okay, so, uh, the clerk has a question.
Yep, uh, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, which meeting did you wanna consider this notice of motion at?
Uh, the next available that, uh, we can consider it.
Okay, so we can put it on the council meeting, but it doesn't allow for public input. Would you prefer public input or just council consideration?
Um, I think at this point, it's probably council consideration.
Okay, then I can, uh, work with you over the course of the next couple of days to, uh, develop a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, and other notices of motion. Counselor Foddy?
Thank you, your worship, through you. This notice of motion is basically a follow-through from our special meeting we had with Strategy Corps. When I mentioned the, uh, the seriousness of our, our waste situation. So I would, uh, I have been talking to the Director of Operations and, uh, I'd like to bring a motion that council designate a Waste Management Committee. And we can do that and handle that whichever way we like. Uh, volunteerism is likely the best. But, uh, something has to move forward and this committee would help steer that is really what it amounts to.
Okay, so I'm assuming that same question applies from the clerk. Would you like this considered at the council meeting next week?
I, yes, next week, yes. I don't think, we're not at a, we're not at a state yet where we need public input because we're merely, uh, providing a committee from within ourselves predominantly, I suspect.
Okay, so, uh, we'll be looking forward to that notice motion. If you, both counselors, if you could work with the clerk to provide that notice of motion so that it comes forward for next meeting, I'll just keep, uh, just make a note that that needs to be done in the next couple of days because the agenda will be set for the council meeting. Today is Tuesday, so it'll be set before Thursday. So really, uh, if you can be in touch with the clerk tomorrow, that would be great. Okay, any other notices of motion? Seeing none, move on to the mayor's update. Um, I'm very pleased to announce that today at, uh, prior to the Joint Services Committee, we had a special meeting of County Council to appoint a new C A O at the county and his name is Ray Calery. He is the current C A O in the Greater Napanee region, uh, and has, uh, been there for twenty-seven years. Um, he is dyed-in-the-wool municipal blood and he has a plethora of, uh, experience in a number of different issues. Um, being part of the, uh, committee to hire him, what struck me most was that his willingness to roll up his sleeves and learn about different issues. Um, he was the champion, uh, to really dig down into OPP billing across the province. He led that charge, uh, with his municipality and I believe it was twenty-four other municipalities through A M O. Um, he also recently had to become an expert in cannabis, um, based on, uh, the route, the changing rules and regulations. Um, he's, he's really, um, it, most of you would be familiar with the Strathcona Center that was created, the double pad, uh, at Napanee. And that was a lot due in part to a lot of work done by the municipality in attracting, uh, the big box stores, the Walmarts and the hotel and the, and the, um, inevitably the arena. So, you know, um, I'm very excited to see what he has in store for county. Um, we are still currently recruiting for a corporate services, uh, position and he is part of that process, thankfully. He does not begin his term with the county until July fifth. So unfortunately, it's not as quick. Um, our current C A O, uh, will be done as of June thirtieth, but he has holidays to take uh, and will be, uh, basically gone from the building on May the sixth, I believe. Um, and we'll have an interim C A O, acting C A O, Allison Tutek, I believe, at the, um, at the counties for the time being. So very excited, uh, which rounds out once we have our corporate services director at the county level and, uh, I think we'll see some, some change and, and good things coming from the county in the future. So effective last Saturday, the province went into a shutdown or put on our emergency break, as they like to say. Our staff are working and are here available by appointment. Uh, call the main line. The doors are closed currently, uh, to limit, um, and for contact tracing, limit access to the building. We are very excited to be working with the St. Lawrence Parks Commission and the Ontario Trails Council to develop a community-based stewardship place for the trail. Um, this will hopefully address some of the ongoing issues we have with maintenance on the trail. Um, part of the concerns with the snowmobilers on the trail is that they're supposed to be using the north lane. But if anybody's taken any time to walk down there, uh, the Sumac has grown in, in a number of places which makes it very difficult and impassable in certain places. Um, and also we can work with residents in regards to snow plowing, um, for ongoing enjoyment for all, um, in a safe, uh, manner. So, um, very excited about that, about that partnership coming forward. And I appreciate that the St. Lawrence Parks Commission have stepped up to create that partnership, uh, along with working with us. So staff have been monitoring water levels in regards to, um, the waterways, local waterways, whether it be the Ganon Oakley River or the St. Lawrence River, Charleston Lake. Um, and, uh, water remains relatively low at this point in time, but if anybody has taken any time to look up north, uh, lakes and rivers and streams up north are still frozen, so we still have a melt coming. Um, there's still water coming down and staff will continue to monitor those levels through, uh, Catarocoy Conservation and I G C. In April, spring break is fast approaching, so schools are closed next week, April twelfth, and the weather will be warming. So if children are out and about, please keep your eyes open. Um, and please also be mindful of the COVID restrictions and regulations. We hope that this lockdown does not last any longer than it needs to and that we'll take effort on all of our parts to maintain social distancing, continue to wash our hands and continue to, um, limit ourselves, our social interactions, uh, with our households. Uh, our annual pitch-in campaign and community cleanup is planned for later in the month in partnership with our village improvement groups. So free bags, gloves and waste disposals. So if you see these bags, um, if you would like to pitch in, please contact Sabera, Laffer, uh, Rockport Development Group, um, and, uh, and Lindhurst Rejuvenation, all of those people will have access to those, uh, gloves, bags and, uh, hopefully we can pitch in. It never ceases to amaze me the number of, uh, pieces of garbage that are on the roadside and it's always disappointing to see that people feel the need to throw things out of their window, um, just for other people to have something to do in the spring, I think. Anyways, um, we celebrate our volunteers this month and volunteers are absolutely the lifeblood of our community and they do so much to help us deliver for seniors' meals, maintain the ice rink, read to children at the school. Please take a moment and recognize the volunteers in your community who make a difference in your life. And on the twenty-eighth, we recognize the National Day of Mourning for persons killed or injured in the workplace. Please note our flags will be at half mast. Council has also kicked off the strategic planning process. Last week, we had a special meeting on March the thirtieth and we met with Strategy Corp via Zoom for a facilitated session. And I think that all the counselors here would, um, say that it was productive and, uh, we had some good ideas coming out of it and I'm very much in, interested in what, uh, the community has to say as they go out for further consultation. So there will be an opportunity for individuals to provide feedback and we expect that this will be towards the end of April. Please follow our social media and other communication platforms to stay informed. Other than that, I hope, um, everyone had a great Easter weekend. Um, it was nice to see the sunshine out. Um, and that you were able to get outside and enjoy some fresh air. So Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship, and, uh, just to go back to, um, um, you know, the cleanup. Um, thank God for the community groups, but, uh, I think one of the biggest, um, people that contribute to the garbage in the roadsides is us. Um, if you run down, um, the county road by our waste site, um, there's garbage on both sides, all the way down the ditches, um, and that comes from our waste site. So I, I think we need to maintain ourselves.
I believe that the Director of Operations has already identified that and staff have been deployed or will be deployed in their future. So that was already discussed internally, but I appreciate you bringing it forward on a public forum.
Thank you.
Um, so the other thing I forgot to mention was, uh, the Centennial Park Survey. Those of you who may or may not be aware, there was a survey done up in the north end in regards to Centennial Park up in Sealy's Bay about what people would like to see in the park because the, uh, play structure is nearing its end of life and so it needs to be replaced. And, um, there was lots and lots and lots of great feedback and, uh, please watch the social media channels. I know that staff are going to be posting the feedback that they did receive and it was great to see all ages, uh, age ranges, um, be willing to give their feedback and, and it's great that the kids wanted to be involved in it as well. So thank you to all of those who contributed to that. Um, are there any other announcements? Counselor Olkey?
Thank you, your worship, and through you, in, in the sense of doing surveys, I'd like to draw everyone's attention to the library survey, which is available on the library website and I've also put it up on my own so people can add to it if they wish. And it is to support the five-year plan that's under development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Olkey. Any further announcements? Uh, seeing none, I'll, there's a motion to adjourn on the floor. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Jameson, Deputy Mayor Lackey. And all those in favor of the motion at hand, please signify. All those opposed, and the motion's carried. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. I hope you have a wonderful evening. Thank you for your time and your attention.